Good evening, everybody. My name is John Knudsen and I'll be your moderator tonight for this school board forum. We have four individuals seeking two positions for the school board for the upcoming term. We should be thankful to Rob Brown, Jamie Johnson, Micah Heisler, and Ryan Wheeler for their interest in attaining a seat on our Board of Education for the betterment of our students, our school, and our community. Please join me in a round of applause and appreciation for our four candidates. A little bit of housekeeping before we get going here with several thank yous. We'd like to thank Angela Herrera and Sarah Jackson for organizing the event tonight and the entire Hudson Middle School Parent Group for hosting this event. We would like to thank Hudson School District and Hudson High School for letting us use this beautiful auditorium and the facilities here. We'd also like to thank Ryan Delacroix from the high school for his tech support necessary for everything tonight. Let's hear it for Hudson High School. We would like to acknowledge and thank Nate Scoog and his team at the River Channel for recording and broadcasting the event tonight as well. And lastly, I've got this note, so I'll read it. We have the Hudson Police Department here and we'd like to thank them for attending. I'm assuming they're here in case I get out of hand, which I've been known to do. Let's hear it for Hudson PD. I'd like to remind everyone that the questions being asked tonight were gathered from citizens of the community who took their time and efforts to submit them. None of the questions were given to the candidates ahead of time. The format for tonight will be as such. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves. And we're telling the candidates to please use this introductory time on yourself, your family, education, those types of things, and not on the issues which we will give plenty of time to in the questions. So each candidate will get two minutes to answer the 16 questions that we have for you tonight. And after the questions, when we get a minute and 45 in, Mal down here in front is going to raise a yellow card for the 15-second warning to your end. And then the last few seconds, you're going to get that red card. So unlike national politics, we expect better decorum here tonight. So thank you in advance for doing that. So let's start with the introductions in alphabetical order. Mr. Rob Brown.
Thank you, John, and thank you to the Hudson School District. Everyone in the audience tonight and those folks at home. Special thank you to the Hudson Middle School Parent Group for organizing tonight, as John said, and also providing the half gallon of water that's with us today. Hopefully, there's a break midway through. Again, my name is Rob Brown and I've been a Hudson community member for the last 20 years. My wife Tara and I have been married for 25 years. We have three children. We have two graduates of the Hudson High School and we have a freshman who is excited to be in this building and away from the middle school, as you can imagine. Bethel Lutheran Church is our place of worship. We've been members since 2007. I am actively involved in that church and have held a variety of positions within the church and am looking forward to continuing to serve and worship there. Professionally, I work with school districts throughout Wisconsin and Minnesota on long-term planning and community engagement. And my focus is on working with those communities to really understand long-term planning that is community-based and community-supported. And I look forward to tonight's discussion. Thank you.
All right. Next, Mr. Micah Heisler.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight and thank you even more for being highly invested in the educational success of your children. My name is Micah Heisler, but many of you may know me better as McKenzie's husband. She was the dance director here at the PIPs for about a decade and I'm sure many of your children went through her classes. And we also own a store here at Kensington in downtown Hudson. Others of you might know me as Carrie Heisler's brother-in-law. She's been the choir director here for about 17, 18 years. And I'm sure many of your children have had the pleasure of being in her choirs in classroom. Otherwise, you may also know me for my brother, who's also heavily involved here at the school, directing and choreographing your musicals and plays. And he also drives a bus here for this amazing school district. Yeah, and the reason I highlight them is because it's thanks to them that I'm here. It's because of them that I find myself here in Hudson and it's why I've fallen in love with not only the community, but the people here. As someone who grew up in Minnesota, I'm surprised to find myself living in Wisconsin. But now that I'm here, I can't imagine myself living anywhere else. The reason I'm here kind of in front of you today is because I see a need and an opportunity for change. I see a need and an opportunity to make our board more accessible and accountable, and that's really what I hope to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Micah. And next we have Jamie Johnson.
Good evening, and welcome to Those Folks Are Here. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your interest in our schools. I've been married to my wife Jean, who's in the audience as well, for nearly 32 years and since 1990. And I have also lived and worked in the Hudson community in that time. My wife and I are very grateful to have made Hudson our lifelong home. Our first 10 years was in North Hudson and the last 21-plus years have been in the town of Hudson. We have three grown kids who all graduated from Hudson and now have college degrees. We're also blessed with two grandchildren that are ages three and five. I grew up in southern Wisconsin, graduated from Nuglaris High School with the college at Carthage College and then UW Law School. So for my day job, I am a litigation attorney and mediator with the Lumen Abdo Law Firm and have served all 32 years in their Hudson office. For at least the last 25 years, my life outside of family and work has been about serving the Hudson community. We have been active members at the Bethel Lutheran Church, including teaching Sunday School and confirmation, mission trips, serving in leadership roles on council and property task forces, and chairing capital campaigns there. And our faith is very important to us. When the kids were little, I coached baseball, basketball, and soccer through the Hudson Boosters, the YMCA, and the Soccer Association. For the last 14 years, I've been a very active member of the Hudson Daybreak Rotary. I'm a past president and have helped raise thousands of dollars for worthy, community-based organizations, most of which have strong emphasis on our youth. And it's that desire to help youth that's been part of my history of support of public schools, going back to the 1990s and our days on the North Hudson PTO. I've lectured at the high school, read to elementary students, coached the youth in government, and served as a mentor to high school Strive students. And since 2013, I've had the opportunity to be on your school board and serve the last eight years as president. I want to do that one more term. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie Johnson. And last but not least, we have a statement from Mr. Ryan Wheeler.
Yes. First of all, I want to say thank you. Thank you to everybody that put this on. Thank you to everybody that's...I've had a lot of people that I see out here that have offered advice, that have helped me. And then everyone that's shown up at our events, just every single person that's on the board currently. This position is something that I completely underestimated. And to be honest, I underestimate every part of it. The time commitment, the decision-making process, the stress of the people that are currently on the board. So eight and a half years ago, I made a deal with my wife that if it didn't bring us closer and didn't bring positivity all the time to our family, that I wasn't going to do it. So I'm not going to run, so I will no longer be campaigning. And I'm going to get back to doing what I love, which is actually mentoring inside the schools. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you, Ryan. Ryan, you deserve a lot of credit for considering the position. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. What we're going to do now is we're going to get into the questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to these questions. We're going to start with Mr. Rob Brown. Rob, the first question, is there a particular issue that motivates you to be on the board? Or what experiences do you have that will benefit being on the board?
Thanks, John. So the two, frankly, two main issues that really have motivated me to run again are similar to the issues that I first ran with back in 2015. We have a facility study and facility work that was underway that frankly is needed. However, the amount of community engagement, teacher-staff engagement in the overall process, in my very humble opinion and experience, was lacking. And I believe certainly needs to be revisited, but I believe it's something that I can contribute to and help make a significant difference in the overall process. The second item that stands out to me is the current financial state of our school district. We are a very strong district. Our administration has done a wonderful job managing the finances that we have. The challenge that we have is back in 2015, our community had realized a roughly $13 million tax savings because the school district wasn't levying its full capacity to the community. And that was wonderful for our community. They didn't have to worry about paying those additional taxes. However, over time, this last year, that under levy has become less than $1 million. And when we look at declining enrollment, we look at, again, from a financial standpoint, where those revenues are coming from, and it's not anything our district did locally incorrectly, it's the fact that the state continues to reduce the revenue that they provide to the school district. There are many tough discussions and a number of decisions that'll have to be made, and I hope to participate in those discussions.
Thank you, Rob. Micah and Jamie, let me know if you'd like me to reread the question for you. Otherwise, Micah, it's your opportunity.
Oh, I'm good. One of the big issues that motivated me to be here and to be running is the accessibility and accountability of the board. Many parents right now, as they advocate for the education of their children, they are not feeling heard and some even feel silenced. And I feel it's a duty of the board to represent all of you and represent what you want for your children rather than direct you to the decisions that we feel are best. And I really want to seek that out, to increase that feedback loop between parents and the board and the administration. And just to let you all know that I will be always willing to sit down and have a conversation with anyone, whether I agree or disagree with them, especially as it concerns the educational success of your children. Because I just strongly feel that our school should be a place for all children and that all children then can succeed. And our school should be a place that unite us instead of divide us.
Thanks very much, Micah. Jamie?
I guess as far as an issue for why I ran for the board, first time was in 2013. And actually, it was the secondary space facilities and the lack of unity in the community on that issue. We were split and we definitely needed to be able to come together, common interests. And we were able to get that done. But even though we were successful in getting a solution to the secondary space needs, the issues didn't stop. We now have issues at our elementary level. And that's going to be probably a subject of more questions, I imagine, because there's a lot of money that has to be invested in our buildings and we need community input. I am very proud of the community engagement that we've done on this board since I've been here in the last eight years, beginning with the engagement to be able to pass a $94 million referendum. And then followed by the engagement we've had every year. We do surveys and we enjoy over a 90% approval rating among our parents regarding the job we're doing in this district. So I want to continue that success and I want to see this school district be the best it can be because our public schools are just the hallmark of any community. It's good for small business. It's good for our property values. And I want to be able to deliver that value, that bang for the buck, to our taxpayers as well. And we're seeing the success in the classroom and we just have to get more of the word out to the community to see what we need for the coming five to 10 to 20 years in our facilities and how we can best do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your answers to that first question. The second question, we're going to start with Mr. Micah Heisler. Micah, the question is, what are your thoughts on changing school start times?
To what?
From what they are right now.
I think it all depends. I mean, like I said on anything, it's like, you know, I think really our job is to implement and represent the parents and the families of the community. So I'd be interested in looking at all data as far as start times and what is suggested and how students perform the best. But I think what it comes down to it is schools not only affect children, they affect families as far as when they can get their children, you know, to school, from school, activities, all those things I think come into play. So I think it's definitely complex. But like I said, I think it comes down to the community and what they want. I don't think we should follow any sort of, you know, national standard or thing like that. I think we just engage with the community.
Thanks for challenging me on that, Mike. It's been rumored that third grade was the best four years of my life, so I wasn't quite sure how to respond to that. But again, I'll remind you, I'm reading the questions submitted by the community. All right. Jamie Johnson?
Well, regarding school start times, this has been an issue that was brought forward to the board, I would say, probably three years ago, maybe even longer because the years start clicking by. But we started a task force that had 40 community members as well as representatives from the different buildings and administration. And they spent hours looking at the research on how later start times can be good for adolescents and the impact on their ability to learn, just overall mental health issues. So I believe that that research definitely has its place. It's just it needs to be a community decision. And when we did take it to a survey here within the last year, it did not have any one option have a lot of support. It was kind of split across the board. Do we start elementary and high school all at the same time? Do we want high school students riding with our kindergartners and our first graders on buses? That was one issue. Another issue, if we're going to flip the start times, do we want our grade school that are standing out waiting for buses at 6:00 a.m. in the morning when it's 25 below out? Then the other issue that came up was the impact on the community and small business and kids being able to work outside the home. And does pushing school back one hour, how does that impact, you know, their study habits? What does that do to after-school activities? If kids are getting home already between 6:30 and 7:00, what happens when it gets closer to 8:00? I think this is an issue that's just because the board didn't change start times in the last year doesn't mean that this can't be revisited again. But I just think at this time, because there wasn't any clear consensus behind one option, that's why we didn't change them this year. But I would be open to listening on this issue in the future. If the community wants to spend the extra $3 million to start them all at the same time, we could do that as well.
Thank you, Jamie. Rob?
So in of itself, school start times, the research is clear. From a secondary standpoint, it does make sense to start school at a later time for those folks. However, as has been mentioned, this is a community decision. School start times not only affect our students, but our parents, local employers, athletics, a variety of things outside of just a child's ability to start and potentially do better in school. I would agree with Jamie as well as Micah that this is a community-centered discussion. This has been litigated for three years and as is necessary, we'll continue to have those discussions. And I will look forward to them if that's appropriate.
Thank you, Rob. Third question, we will start with Mr. Jamie Johnson. Jamie, what is your opinion on the critical race theory being applied to our district?
Well, I guess everyone is entitled to their opinions, but the fact of the issue is we do not teach critical race theory here in our school district. I'm not aware of any plans to do so. If, you know, we're getting into political beliefs and so forth, I don't think that critical race theory has a place in either our elementary or even our high school. It has maybe a place at a high level, maybe at a law school or in some sociology level graduate school. Because as far as how I understand what critical race theory is, and that is, you know, promoting the idea that, you know, white people are guilty for the sins of their fathers and so forth, I think that we should not let some talk about a theory that's not even taught in our school district dictate what we're doing. I think what we try to do is teach the facts and we don't teach our kids how to think or indoctrinate them. We should instead just teach history as it was.
All right. Rob, your opinion on the critical race theory being applied in our district?
Certainly. Thanks, John. As relates to critical race theory being applied in our school district, it is not a curriculum that is included in our curriculum today, nor is it required by the state. That said, our administration has done a nice job reviewing curriculum when there are concerns, certainly where parents find, in not only entire courses on critical race theory, but perhaps there are pieces or maybe there's a bit of the learning that a parent has questions on. The district has been very open to having conversations around what those specific issues are. And if somebody disagrees with that, our superintendent, Dr. Nicolet, has been open to having conversations on that as well. So certainly, as a school district, we don't believe in teaching critical race theory. It's not part of the curriculum personally. I would agree that we should not teach critical race theory in any form.
Thank you, Rob. Micah?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with both of them. I may be even more strongly against it. I think it is a big concern and a big risk to our school systems, kind of not only here in Hudson, but, you know, across our country. I think anytime that we start to entertain the idea of introducing discrimination into our schools, that it's a significant problem. So I think we need to be very wary of it and we need to be wary of components of it, you know, finding its way into the curriculum that we do teach. So that we should have a, you know, very good understanding of who's developing it, where it's coming from, and making sure that it doesn't get into our school system. Because I think some people are concerned that some of it has leaked into our curriculum and we need to make sure that, you know, we stay away from teaching all types of discrimination in our schools.
Thank you, Micah. Next question, we'll start back with Rob. And Rob, what are your three top areas where you think the district needs improvements?
Three top areas where I believe the school district needs improvements. First off, as it relates, and I mentioned this earlier, from a long-term facility planning perspective, there are financial implications, but there are also needs as it relates to our elementary as well as our middle school facilities. Furthermore, I think personal finance, although there are courses taught as individual courses at our high school, there's not a required personal finance course for all of our children. And I believe having a consistent be-ready-for-life offering would be important for all of our students regardless of what they choose to do later on in their life. And I think lastly, as it relates to special education, there continues to be needs for focus around our special education services. You know, statewide, roughly 14% of our students are special needs kids. And it's not that we have more special needs kids today than we did when we were all in high school. Our districts simply do a better job identifying those children. And so how do we, once we've identified them, prepare them and provide the proper resources so that every child has the proper opportunity to do the best they can do to contribute to society?
Thank you, Rob. Micah, what are your top three areas where you think the district needs improvement?
I think one is to make our schools a place for all children of all backgrounds and beliefs. You know, right now, we are facing, you know, reduced enrollment and a lot of that is because right now, families do not feel comfortable sending their children to our school district because of different things that are being taught and how they're being listened to or not listened to regarding the educational success of their children. The other is just parent involvement. I think we do a lot better job, especially the last two years, of getting parents into our schools, getting the parents that are involved. I have a strong belief that if we're really concerned about the success of our children, then the people that sit in front of them and are actively involved in their education on a daily basis, those people need to be supported, empowered, and highlighted. And those people are the teachers that are in the classroom and the parents that are at home with them. Those are the people that are most invested in the success, the academic success of those children. And for that reason, they should be the ones that are most involved and have the biggest say. The third thing, I think, is financial literacy. For all the things that we teach in school, I've never quite understood why financial literacy isn't really one, to really understand just how finances work, how they're managed, you know, interest rate, compound interest, all those things can really make a big difference as you start your adult life. And it can set you off on the right foot or the wrong foot. And I think that's something we can do a lot better job of.
Thank you, Micah. Jamie Johnson?
I would say number one would be core achievement in, you know, the basic areas like reading and writing. We have a segment of our students that are doing really well, the high achievers. But I think as a whole, we need to be able to raise up all students. Number two, I think the equity audit that was done a little over a year ago showed that, you know, the way that we are doing our special needs needed to change. And so I think that's an area that has been embraced by the district. We're in the process of improving that. It's actually an area that has attracted families to our district in the past. And I think if we can, you know, the way that we can mainstream some of these children, and we have over eight, I'm sorry, 700 students on individualized education plans or IEPs. And it puts an incredible strain on our special education department overall. But I think the changes that have been suggested are going to show results in the coming years. And then third, I just, I think constant continual improvement in all areas. We do a lot of things well. We are one of the top schools in the state for advanced placement, yet I think that we can continue. There's classes that we can continue to offer that maybe we don't now. And I could see us continuing to improve on the career readiness. We focus so much on the college readiness, but also the career readiness and the trades in our schools. We've made some great strides there with our apprenticeship program. And we just recognize some certified, some nursing assistance students that have got their certifications last night at the school board meeting. So I think we can continue to do programs like that.
Very good. Thank you, Jamie. Our fifth question, we're going to start with Micah. Micah, the question is, would a K-12 online virtual academy benefit our district and why or why not? Again, would a K-12 online virtual academy benefit our district and why or why not?
Doesn't one kind of exist already? I mean, the Wisconsin Virtual Academy? Will it benefit? Well, I mean, I think it does. I think we need to have a place for all children. I think our focus should be on, obviously, making our in-person schools a place for all children. But if we don't make some necessary changes, then we need to make sure that we have places where families can send, you know, their children and be educated in a way and fashion that they're comfortable with. So I think especially the last, you know, couple of years, that has been a great outlet for many families. for many families who have had some issues. And, and I think we need to provide, provide that choice until we do make our schools a place for all children of all beliefs and all backgrounds.
Thanks, Mica. Jamie Johnson?
Yes, well, we are, we do have a K-12 virtual academy here in our school district. So I think that it's just started, but I think it's got a great potential for a future because not all students learn the same way. If COVID taught us anything, it taught us that for the general student population, that in-person learning is the absolute best. Some students really struggle with virtual learning and that's why we strove as a school board to keep us in person when the school districts right across the river were going virtual. It's, for some students, it's maybe a good way to learn and I think that's important to have that option, but we do have that option for folks. So, you know, whatever is the best way for a student to learn, we need to support that. And I agree with Mica that, you know, we're, we're striving to make success for all students, not just targeted groups.
Thank you, Jamie. Mr. Brown?
So certainly, a K-12 online virtual academy would, would be of significant benefit to the Hudson community. You know, first off, as was mentioned, are, we have students that do very well in school, struggled at home, but we also have students who do much better in a virtual environment. And so again, as we talk about special education, but our student population in general, the ability for the Hudson School District to be able to offer curriculum in a way and deliver it such that our students have an opportunity to be successful is, is very important. Not only that, but it gives us an opportunity to provide more offerings for our students regardless of space needs or whatever the case might be. If we have a class that a student would like to take as an elective and do it through the virtual academy, God bless them. It's better for everybody. And I think also as important, I mentioned in my, one of my opening comments, from a revenue standpoint and that continuous need to have that conversation and some of the challenges were that are coming, $10,000 a student, if we can have a student from Waukesha attend Hudson's virtual academy, there's revenue for the Hudson School District or another student from Stevens Point or from River Falls. Those are opportunities where we don't have to build brick and mortar facilities. It's an opportunity for us to offer more and do better for our own students.
Thank you, Rob. Our next question, we'll start with Jamie Johnson. Jamie, do you support LGBTQ sexuality to be taught in the elementary schools and to be required in health class in the high school versus being offered as an elective? Why or why not?
Well, I'm not, not being a parent of, of any children in this district for some time, and I have not had a need to research that specific issue as to when we introduce it in the curriculum, et cetera. I, I would just say that we have had very few, if any, complaints in this area. And I think that the, whatever, you know, that are, if, if there is, they get addressed. I know parents have options when it comes to what their children learn in those areas and I would support those parents that want to opt out of that. So as far as requiring, requiring that specific curriculum, I haven't seen it. I didn't see it when my kids were going through the school back in 2010, 2011, but I have to admit that I don't, in, in the board position that we're in setting policy, we don't set specific curriculum and review all the textbooks and so forth.
Okay, very good. Because of the length, I'll repeat the question for you, Rob. Do you support LGBTQ sexuality to be taught in the elementary schools and to be required in health class in the high school versus being offered as an elective? Why or why not?
And so as a, as a school board member, and this is something I learned during my first two terms, is that as a school board member, you do not represent just one segment of the population. You represent the entire community and it's for you as one of seven to have the conversation with administration, with the school board on what are the pros and cons of offering anything that we do, any of our challenges. And some are very, well, very in our face today. Pun intended. As it relates to the LGBTQ at the elementary level, because this is a, we are a community that not everybody believes necessarily in this curriculum, I would suggest that on whole, that I would not support it at the elementary level. And however, as an elective at the high school, I believe our secondary students have choice. They have conversations with their parents. And if they choose that elective, for whatever reason, at the secondary level, they should have that opportunity to participate, but it shouldn't be mandated for all students. Thank you.
Mica, if you'd like me to repeat it, I will, or are you good?
I got it.
Thank you.
I mean, I think, I think elementary school's too early for any sexuality to be taught. I mean, I feel very strongly that's something that should be taught at home. And once it is introduced, yeah, I don't think it should be mandated because if it is mandated, then you have to make sure that you are open up to differing opinions. And I think then it becomes extremely complex. Like we are, are we okay and are we going to support children who are taught and, and don't agree with it and have conflicting beliefs? Because if we're going to make it something mandatory, then we better open it up. Because if we're truly going to be diverse and inclusive, we need to be diverse and inclusive and that means to all, not pick certain ideologies that we're going to support and teach and meanwhile silence other portions of the population and, and students. So I would definitely be against it at the elementary level and other levels. No, I would not mandate it or make it required.
Thank you, Mica. Our next question, starting with Rob Brown. What do you think the purpose of public education is?
The purpose of public education, you know, and certainly it's easy to go into the weeds with, with a question like this. It's very open-ended. But frankly, at the end of the day, the purpose of, of public education, frankly, and any education is to prepare every student regardless of their background, regardless of their opportunities, their social, economic conditions, to prepare every student to become the best contributing member of our society, especially from a global perspective as our economies continue to become one. It's, 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 it's easy to talk about very specific items as it relates to public education, but at the end of the day, do we make good productive citizens? And that's the important thing. Can they stand on their own? Are they able to, again, manage their own finances, take care of their families and work within their communities? And the public education system is centered to that.
Thank you, Rob. Mica?
Like I've reiterated a few times here, I, I think, I think a key part of public education is obviously education. And I think we, as a district, could be more focused on the education part. Like I know many are disappointed, you know, in our mission statement as a district that we have taken any reference to education or academics out of that, out of that mission. And I think when we focus on things outside of academics, that's what, that's what introduces things that divide us and divide our students and gets our students unfocusing on things that divide them instead of on things that unite them. So as a public education, we need to make sure that we're a space for all children and that we've, and that we're focused on academics.
Thank you, Mica. Jamie Johnson?
Well, can't agree more that the purpose of public education is to educate our, our children and educate the public. But to what end? And I think that public education plays a key role and that's why we have the mission statement we have for that I am very proud of. It says, "We're dedicated to developing, caring and contributing community members." You can't have caring and contributing community members that are ignorant. You know, they have to be taught, whether it's the basics of reading, writing, history and on up through the elective classes that they elect to take. I think giving them some choice is important and I think empowering our, our parents is, is equally important. And so that's why collectively with the parents, we want to be committed to giving a rigorous and student-centered environment to ensure that we have equitable experiences for all students, not just specific groups of students.
Thank you, Jamie. Our next question, we'll start with Mica. What do you think could help improve the mental health resources available to our students?
Well, I guess I'm not, I'm not overly familiar with everything that, that, that we do provide from a mental health standpoint. I think it's important that we have resources and that they're available anytime, anytime that they need them, so all students feel supported and that our mental health services are prepared to support all children, once again, from that shared different beliefs and backgrounds so that they're prepared to support them in the way that they need and not a specific way that, you know, of their specific ideologies and things that they, they, they have learned from their home, et cetera. So I think anytime that also comes up, I think we need to make sure that, you know, parents, parents are involved, that anything that we provide from that standpoint includes parent involvement because that is, you know, a huge part of, of the responsibility of our parents. And so if we're going to participate in that, in that aspect of our students, we need to make sure that there's full transparency with parents.
Thank you very much. Jamie Johnson, your response?
Could you state the question again? I think I was clear in my throat.
Question is, what do you think could help improve the mental health resources available to our students?
Well, what can improve is, you know, what we can do as a board is obviously policies and trying to put some resources. In the end, many times that means money, but we have limited funds and we have to be careful not to, you know, become a mental health provider. But given the levels of anxiety and depression that are, have risen, especially in the last couple of years with COVID, I think we do have a role, especially in the more clinical aspect of diagnos, diagnos, diagnosing those issues and being able to direct them to get the resources. I agree, we need to work with parents. Many of these issues though are beyond, you know, even the parent's ability to tackle themselves. But if we could play a role in being in, in, improving wherever we can in that area and that's includes the school board. But we've had the benefit of some grants recently in that area from, on a state basis and I think we should, will continue to research and cultivate those opportunities where we can to maximize and leverage our resources.
Thank you, Jamie. Rob Brown?
From a mental health perspective, resources in general, the earlier we can identify a student's need, the better off that student is. Certainly working with parents, preparing them and helping them from an education perspective to be able to identify certain situations. All of us are busy in our lives. You know, we have, many of us have multiple children at varying ages. I mean, how many parents are, have multiple children doing multiple activities and we run through our days every single day? And for parents to be so busy with their own lives and then working with their families, it makes it challenging for them to identify and it's easy for students to, to be missed. So to be able to help those parents identify challenges at home would be a wonderful resource, a wonderful resource. And I think lastly, my last year on the board, we had a presentation from a teacher group talking about how they were assigned students and how that teacher was responsible for just checking in with those students. I think if it's not already, that's something that should be done district-wide and quite honestly, wouldn't cost any, anything additional.
All right, thank you, Rob. Next question, we're going to start with Mr. Jamie Johnson. Jamie, how would you respond to transgender students in athletics?
Well, how would I respond? I don't know if I would respond, first of all, individually as a board member. Again, our school board works as a body, but I can say that our school board in our school district, we follow the WIAA rules and the WIAA has already, you know, governed in this area and I don't think we have a role in conflicting with what the WIAA. So I adopt the way that they handle this particular issue.
Very good. Thank you, Rob.
I would, I would agree with Jamie, you know, in that from a, you know, rule standpoint, the WIAA does have standards that they follow and as a board were required to follow. And so, you know, as it relates to, you know, transgender students participating in, in athletics, you know, we would be bound by, by that governing body.
And lastly, Mica?
I mean, I'm not familiar with how much we are bound, bound by, you know, what freedom we have as, as a school district, but I would like to focus on that. For me, at least personally, you know, I think we need to protect our girls in, in this community and that we need to protect their ability to, to compete. And so for me personally, I feel from a sports standpoint that biological females should have, have their sports and biological boys should have their sports. I think it just introduces too much unfairness if, if, if we allow biological boys to compete in women's sports.
All right, thank you. Next question, we're going to start with Rob Brown. Rob, the question is, what volunteering opportunities have you taken advantage of within our community? What volunteering opportunities have you taken advantage of within our community?
So 11 years with junior achievement, starting in 2007, teaching many years, two different classes, just given the ages of my children. Junior achievement at the middle school level, junior achievement at the high school level, heavily active with, again, Bethel Lutheran Church, been on the facility task force that they had, had been a worship leader. I've led Sunday School, large group, small group. I've, well, I was volunteer of the month in November. And I'm proud of that, by the way. But, you know, additional volunteering opportunities, you know, I frankly, I would say two terms on the school board from 2015 to 2021 as well.
Thank you, Rob. Mica?
I was getting a drink of water. Can you hit me with a question one more time, something about volunteer experience?
Question is, what volunteering opportunities have you taken advantage of in our community?
Oh, so for a few that are unaware, I've only been in the community here for about a year and a half, so I have not been able to really get heavily involved. This is, this is my first, first attempt here in my, in past in my other communities. Big things that I was involved in are both Young Life and Habitat for Humanity. Those are big organizations that I support and try to devote time to. But as far as specifically Hudson, this, this is my first attempt.
Very good. Jamie Johnson?
All right. Well, at the risk of repeating myself, I guess most of my introductory statement about saying who I am is, you know, two-thirds of that is about volunteering for this community. I mentioned the 25 years that we've been, or more than that. I actually have Bethel Lutheran Church and teaching kids has always been a favorite of mine, so we did that Sunday School and Confirmation. And then with the schools themselves, we were involved at the PTO level for, in North Hudson. I really much enjoyed the, very much enjoyed coming in once a semester and lecturing to the driver's ed class when we used to have driver's ed in our high school. I've also lectured, you know, a career day, told high school students what it was like to be a lawyer and, but I also enjoy coming in just reading to the elementary students. I coached the youth and government program that was through the YMCA, but it involved a lot of Hudson students. And I guess though, when it came to the one-to-one interactions, or whether that was teaching one to one interactions, or whether that was teaching small group confirmation class at church, or our high school Strive students, we have a grade program here in the high school for students who are identified as maybe behind in whether it's socially, emotionally, or in their academics and need some extra help. And being able to be that one on one mentor, I did that for multiple years in a row. In fact, saw one student through, you know, all four years. And that was very gratifying to see that student graduate and actually go on to post secondary education. And then my biggest opportunities come with Rotary and the last 14 years there in leadership roles. But then we impact so many youth organizations with what we do. So and the Rotary Youth Exchange Program as well.
Very good. And Jamie, I don't know if you had anything to do with selecting my wife to win the Ford Mustang this past year through the Rotary Raffle, but I thank you.
Not at all. I still haven't sold the winning ticket yet either, so.
All right. The next question is, do you support teachers and their professional judgment to choose curriculum and why? Mica, we're going to start with you.
Yes. In a combination with with parent involvement, I think our teachers should be empowered, because I think that will introduce more diversification as far as what is being taught. Because I think if one thing we know is that kids learn differently, and kids will connect with different teachers and different styles and different personalities. So I think if we give our teachers more freedom to direct curriculum, I think we'll end up connecting with more students and really, really have an impact on more on more students' feet futures. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mica. Jamie Johnson, the question again is, do you support teachers and their professional judgment to choose curriculum and why?
Well, I trust and support our teachers absolutely. When it comes to curriculum, though, in order for when you're a bigger school district like this, and you have, you know, six to eight teachers teaching social studies or the English subjects, et cetera, you do need to have general consistent guidelines. And but I see the individual teacher's ability to have some freedom and discretion within those guidelines is really necessary for the, you know, the experience of of the students. I think parents want to know what's being taught. I think we don't need legislation that's been introduced in Minnesota to, you know, to hamper things about here. We, parents already have the opportunity to get, if they want a syllabus or find out what the curriculum is going to be, they can do that. There is full accessibility when it comes to that kind of thing. And I I do think our teachers do an excellent job of using professional judgment. And it's our job, you know, to set the policy, but then and the administration, you know, sets the general guidelines and the standards. And then once we have those standards set, it should be up to the individual teachers, you know, what they want to focus on and and what they emphasize.
Very good. Thank you, Jamie. Rob Brown?
Does anybody remember the new math? And so as it relates to curriculum, you know, we have, you know, our teachers who do a fantastic job, but it it is a three legged stool, you know. And I think, you know, administration, as far as the overall guidance, so there's consistency within our school district, you know, teachers certainly need to participate because they they're living the curriculum. They know what's connecting with students. They understand what's not, you know. And as it relates to, you know, the new math, sometimes, you know, teachers had some challenges with it. And I think there's a a do different, do better in that regard. But also, I think our parents need to be involved. And so as it relates to this three legged stool, the parent group, which I understand the district still has today, who participates in, you know, curriculum discussions, our teachers do participate in curriculum discussions, working with administration. So I believe all three are very important, especially that of of a teacher.
All right. Thank you, Rob. Next question, we'll start with Jamie Johnson. The question is, regarding the recent school district facility survey, what do you see for the future of our district?
Well, the immediate future is going to be more community engagement. We had the task force was made up of community members that dedicated their time, about 15, 16 hours, spread out over six meetings over three months. And they were able to deeply dive into these issues of what we have, what we're facing at each of our facilities. But we have aging facilities. Four of our six elementary schools are at least 60 years old, and they have major systems that need replacement, maybe not this year or next year, but within the next 10 years. And so decisions need to be made about how we're going to be investing taxpayer dollars and what makes the most sense. Right now, there could be realized substantial operational savings by looking at whether we deliver our education at the elementary level with fewer than the six schools. Right now, we have capacity for 2,900, nearly 2,900 elementary school students, but we only have 2,100 students. And that number may go down even further if birth trends continue to go in the in the direction they are. So I see us getting some more community engagement. We're going to do a demography study. We just approved that last night, which we've done those over the years when we're looking at our facility needs. But once we we were expected to get those results in late May, early June at the latest, and then we'll be able to assess whether, you know, where we need to set our capacity, because right now it's at 2,900, so it's quite high, and whether we can make some savings, because we're going to be facing some major budgetary questions, you know, down the road. We're hitting our levy limit and our under levy's gone. So very serious questions in the in the coming year.
Thank you, Jamie. Rob, you're next.
As it relates to the facility survey and and also the facility task force, I was fortunate enough to have been selected to participate on that task force. And one of my, one of my takeaways is that there were, there were certainly good ideas. But one of the, one of the questions I had asked was whether or not our teachers and staff had participated in any of the ideation that had come from, you know, this work. And the answer was no, that they had talked to the principals. And from a, from a teacher's perspective, for those that live in the space, that's challenging. Furthermore, when we talk about the the survey, when we disaggregate the information, peel back the layers of the onion, so to speak, you know, what we learn is that 75% of our community is not employed by the district, nor do they have students in our school district. Yet the survey had a very small percentage of those folks participate. And so when we look at, and I would agree with Jamie, there's a lot of wonderful opportunity to have some really great conversations, but we have to include the community much earlier, in my opinion. And I'm, again, that's one of the reasons I'm running again, and I'm looking forward to those conversations.
Thank you, Rob. Mica, again, regarding the recent school district facility survey, what do you see for the future of our district?
I think one thing I see and what a lot of the things that I've heard is that our community loves our smaller community schools. They love the smaller feel and the environment that it provides for their for their children. They seem less concerned about, you know, the building itself and more what they get from just having a smaller community and having that school in their community. And that that they feel provides a lot of value to them. I think another thing we're seeing from the survey is that, is that, you know, they want to see more planning from the board and the administration, that every every time that we need changes to our schools, that it doesn't require a referendum. Our our school tax revenue has has doubled in the last in the last decade, but yet, you know, we needed a referendum for the high school. And now we're looking at a referendum just to update our elementary schools. Like, I think if we do have to do another referendum, it should be this time it should include sustainable spending. And that means these updates that need to be made, this maintenance that needs to happen, that should be part of our yearly budget. And so every time that we have additional needs, we don't have to go back to the taxpayers.
Very good. Thank you. Our next question, we're going to start with Mr. Rob Brown. And Rob, the question is, how do you intend to support our teachers and staff within the school district?
I plan to support our teachers and staff by, you know, ensuring that they they have a voice. It's, it's important to hear teachers and staff to better understand the conditions of their space, how best to help them wherever the need may may arise. You know, certainly there's a chain of command, you know, teachers, if they have issues, need to talk to their principals and and work up. But ultimately, when we're talking about policy decisions, our our leadership, our superintendent, you know, will continue to present those, you know, ideas and solutions. But in the in that participation needs to be our teachers and staff. And I I hope to continue to encourage and have them help bring a voice in that regard.
Thank you, Rob. Mica, you're next.
Yeah, I think one of the things is, you know, we kind of touched on it with the curriculum, that, you know, I would just like to see them have more freedom to pursue the ways that they see that they can best connect with the children in their classroom. Me, because in the end, that's what we're really kind of about, is creating academic success for each and every child. And since the teachers are the ones in this classroom, I just think they should have a lot more freedom to do that, because they know what is going to reach each child, especially when you combine that with parent involvement. I think the more power and the more freedom that we can give our teachers, I think will benefit our children.
Thank you. Jamie, how do you intend to support our teachers and staff?
Sorry. By continuing to do what we've been, increasing the voice of teachers. We have teacher advisory council. We put teachers on other task force and committees. So I'm fully behind getting that input of the folks who have the boots on the ground, if you will, and have the face to face contact with students. So in addition to, like Rob said, ensuring they have a voice, but also giving them tools, the resources, so that they don't have to go to other funding sources to equip their classrooms and so forth. Professional development, very important, that teachers be given that opportunity to have the latest and greatest when it comes to learning their profession and continuing to strive for excellence. So, you know, and having the best working conditions we can have here within our school in all schools. So giving them the facilities and updating those facilities, which takes a lot of resources to do that. It's not just a matter of replacing furnaces and roofs, but also making sure that they have, you know, the resources in a facility way as well as when it comes to equipment and so forth.
Thank you, Jamie. Starting with Mica, the question, the next question will be, should public tax dollars be used to fund private education? Should public tax dollars be used to fund private education? Mica, you're up first.
Well, I think that comes down to the, once again, is whether we're going to make our public schools a place, you know, for all children, a place where all families want to send their children. Because I don't think it'd be reasonable to want, you know, our family's money, but not want their children, right? If we want their money, we should want their children as well. So that means we have to make sure our schools are a space for all children, of all beliefs, of all backgrounds, as I continue to say. And so whether we're willing to do that or not, I think plays a large role on how that shakes out. Because if we're not, if we're not going to support our beliefs and stuff, then yeah, I think then then we should allow school choice, because it's about the children. And all children should have a chance to be successful. And we should be able to do that without dictating their belief foundation and system.
Thank you. Jamie, should public tax dollars be used to fund private education?
Well, this doesn't sound so much like a question that a school board member has much control over, because it really is a more of a question folks down in Madison need to be asked, whether they're Republican or Democrat. It's more of a partisan issue. But when it comes down to it, my feeling is that people want to choose to send their kids to private schools that ought to be their choice. And if and then they should fund that choice. The public tax dollars, I know initially it was to expand choice, and that was a great idea. But when the formula became that then it was a zero sum game, so we're going to take it and shift that tax dollars from public schools to private schools, that I'm not in favor. We shouldn't be pitting those groups against each other. They operate under different rules. And I think that public tax dollars ought to be where the, in public schools, and that's our mission, is to educate all children. We already are, you know, we're doing that, and we need as much resource as we can and not have those siphoned off. This is more of an issue down in Milwaukee, really, than it is in Hudson. But just it's an overall philosophical thing, I guess.
Rob Brown?
Tax dollars should not be used to fund private education, in my opinion. The the challenge we have is that a school district in many communities, well, first off, a school district's required to provide the best education, and it's up to the board to make sure the superintendent's doing their job, and the superintendent does their job to provide the best curriculum and make it the best place to work for for teachers and staff. Now, outside of the school district, you know, what we find is that a the school district is many times the largest employer in the city or in that county. Those teachers and that staff, from a local economy standpoint, go to the local Ace Hardware, they go to the local grocery store, they own homes. And so when you start taking away, say, $10,000 per student and sending it to a private institution, not only do you degrade your ability to educate your children, you degrade your local economy. It takes away everything from going to the local bar and grill, to your grocery store, to everything. So when, when we talk about taking away public funding from schools, if the school district isn't doing their job, run for the school board. Make change. Work with the board, be one of seven, make change. But sending public dollars to a private institution is a challenge that we shouldn't allow, in my opinion.
Next question, we'll start with Jamie Johnson. The upcoming change to block scheduling, give us one example of how this will benefit our students?
Okay, so the block scheduling. Again, this is a change that's been talked about for four years, back when Peg Schumacher started discussing it when she was principal here. And the block scheduling, as I understand it, it really increases the ability of the student to dive deeper into subjects. It allows them to focus more so that they're not just being cut off at that 48 minute mark or 52 minute mark. I'm not sure how long our periods are now. But by going, being able to go 80, 90 minutes into a subject a couple of days a week, instead of, you know, the shorter period of time every day, I think that that's a benefit. Number two, it also allows for electives. We changed our graduation requirements to reflect this block scheduling. And as many other high achieving school districts already are at block scheduling, I think that there's opportunity for us to increase our overall achievement level. And, you know, face it, there's some kids who aren't going to be taking AP Biology or AP Chemistry. But if they can have other electives that are just as important to them for whatever they want to become in a career, maybe it's not going to college, but they should have that same opportunity to dive deeper into those electives and not just the required courses.
Thank you, Jamie. So Rob, the question again is, the upcoming change to block scheduling, give us one example of how this will benefit our students?
So my, my son, my oldest, he was part of our STEM Academy. He wished he had an opportunity to take other electives, but he was in a very rigorous program. My daughter, my eldest daughter, who's now graduated, she was in our healthcare academy and was also in a very rigorous program and had wished she had an opportunity to do, to take other courses. As mentioned earlier, the job of our school district is to create contributing, well rounded members of our society. And if we have an opportunity to afford all of our students an opportunity to take an additional class, do something additional class, do something more, we should afford that. And so I think the block scheduling provides that, the additional benefit of, of additional exposure to variety of classes.
Thank you, Rob. Mica, last response to this question.
Yeah, I think Jamie and Rob did a great job at outlining the benefits of it. As someone who grew up in block scheduling, I also think another benefit is just being kind of smart of a, a part of a smaller community within a community, something that block scheduling provides. I think, I think the only negative about it is probably like ADD kids like me, hour and a half can be a long time, especially at that age. But yeah, overall, I think it's very positive.
Very good. Thanks to all three of you for those answers. I have in my hand, as Karnak the Magnificent would say, the last question. And Mal, we are so far ahead of schedule, you can put that paddle down and quit bidding. All right. The, the final question, and we're going to start with Rob, is what can our district do to support those students who have fallen behind due to the pandemic these last few years?
So what our district can do to help those students that have fallen behind is to, first off, understand where they are today. When we were all at home, you know, the Hudson School District was fortunate enough to keep our kids in school as much as possible, the St. Paul School District went completely virtual. The superintendent, I believe it was in January of '21, had indicated that 40% of his student population, the St. Paul School District, 40% of his student population were failing. To help our students, it's best to understand, first off, baseline, where are they at today? How are they doing, you know, not only academically, but also emotionally and socially? We have gone through a significant amount of change, and frankly, a lot of our youth are, they continue to struggle. So understanding a baseline first off, academically, socially, emotionally, you know, but I also think working with, because the state already has programs put in place that we can take advantage of and some additional funding to help our students, specific students, and especially those that are on the fringes, like special education, those students that are perhaps even when in school, not doing terribly well. There are programs that we have an opportunity to participate in and find funding for that will help our students along those ways.
Thank you, Rob. So Mica, what can our school district do to support those students who have fallen behind due to the pandemic these last few years?
Yeah, I mean, as Rob mentioned, we need to make sure that we've identified every, every possible program that is out there, and then make sure that students are aware of every program that's available to them, and that we're having active conversations with the actual students about what they need, where they feel they're behind, all, all those different things, and be open to all suggestions and all ideas, because I think we owe it to them. Especially, you know, after these last couple of years, yes, they've been hard on everybody, but I think, you know, those students have been hit the hardest as far as preparing them for, for the next level. So we need to pursue every avenue we can and throw as much at it. I think that's another big reason why we got to get parents, you know, back into our schools. They're a huge asset, a huge resource, and they can help us, you know, seek out some of those things and add some additional help and backbone as we try to get them caught up.
Very good. Thank you. Mica, Jamie Johnson, last response.
Well, I'm hopeful that, you know, we don't have as many that have fallen behind as some districts. Hudson was one of the ones that had probably the most in-person instruction over the last two years. And, you know, we've tried to implement student-centered teaching, and I think our teachers have done an awesome job in that regard. But as hard as you try, you're always going to have some that will fall behind. So I agree with Rob, it's about assessment, and I agree with Mica that it's about conversation, not just though with students, but it's also with the parents, and it's teamwork with the teachers and being able to identify the students and then showing the resources. It's, whether it's adding paras or teaching assistants in particular areas, beefing up their individual education plans, but there may be students who don't have individual education plans that have fallen behind. And they might be the best example of students that we would, you know, we could help out in the summer. I mean, summer is the best opportunity for catch-up. I know when I was, you know, a young learner, it was the summer reading program that made a difference for me when I was in second and third grade, and, you know, one summer I think I read over 100 books. And that was, that opportunity to get that much, not only catch-up, but get ahead as well. So we have a great summer school program. In fact, it's one of our, you know, we, it's well-participated in, and I think that, you know, we have no barriers. If parents feel that their kids need that catch-up, that opportunity is there to get them into a summer program. And Rob's right, we have ESER money, and otherwise known as COVID money, that the federal government has designated for districts across the state. I mean, you know, Milwaukee is getting 30 or 50 times what we are here in, maybe 100 times what we are in Hudson. But there are monies in districts that have been in person as long as Hudson, almost have to get creative in how can we use some of that money. But I think this is a great area to do that, is to dedicate some resources in this next year, as, you know, we're coming out of this thing. We've been mask optional for four months, and we're returning to normal. Thankfully, cases are plummeting. We had one reported case over this last weekend compared to 77, in 75 and 77 that were reported over the second, third weekends in January. So things are getting better, and there's a line at the end of town, but we need to be able to identify those kids and catch them up with the resources that, that they need.
Very good. Thank you to all three candidates for your answers. I want to personally thank the community citizens who supplied the questions for tonight's forum. And now we, again, the fact that their answers were concise and relatively short, we're a bit ahead of schedule. This forum didn't resemble any of the national politics of Donald Trump and Hillary Clinton or Joe Biden and Donald Trump, and so we have a great respectful group of individuals here. We're going to have closing remarks, and each of you can take up to five minutes for closing remarks to catch up on anything maybe that you had in mind that wasn't asked or something you'd prefer to embellish a little bit more. Mica, we're going to start with you.
Okay. Microphone on. First of all, I just want to thank, you know, the community and the parents for this opportunity. I take it, I take it very seriously, and I promise to have real honest conversations and be available to, to all parents, to all people in this community. If I do get the opportunity to serve on the board, some things that I think I just want to reiterate are, like I said, just accessing and accountability of the board and the administration, to make sure that all parents feel heard, that all parents have a place where they can go, where they know that they're going to get responses to their concerns if they have them, or if they feel that they're not being addressed at their schools, that they know they can show up to a board meeting and that someone's going to have a conversation with them and be interested and invested in seeking a solution to whatever is currently confronting them and their children. I think the other thing is just parent involvement, really being an advocate for that and getting them into our schools as much as we can, because I think they're such a strong resource. The more that you can have someone who is as heavily invested in the success of something as parents are into their kid's education, I think you can only benefit. It's such a resource and such an asset, and I think we can just do a much better job at that. Yeah, and then just making our schools a place for all students. Like, I would just love it if, you know, Hudson School District was as, was known as the place where all students will be welcomed and embraced, and that they'll all feel confident to be able to be themselves, to be confident in their beliefs, you know, a place where we create an environment of mutual respect, where that doesn't mean that people have to agree. In fact, it would mean the exact opposite, that people can have opinions and ideas that directly conflict, but that we can teach our young people that that's okay. And that, you know, it doesn't take away you that someone else disagrees with you, and it doesn't take away from them that they don't believe what you believe. And really try to do as much as we can to take the divisiveness out of our schools so that hopefully the next generation can do a much better job than we are doing as far as not staying divided. The other thing I wanted to touch on was just the school choice piece. And that really, yeah, it would be ideal if our public schools were a place for all children. But if, if a child seemed to need to go somewhere else because we weren't creating an environment where they could feel like they could be themselves in a place where they succeed, we're not, we're not robbing the district from that money, because that money's not for the school district. The money is for the child. That's why we do it, is to educate the children and to educate each children. And, and that money should be for that education of that child. So like I said, if we focus on ourselves and create the school that I think we can create, we're not going to have that issue. And that's what we need to do more of, I think, in this district, is to look more intrinsically, not say, hey, why is that happening, but more challenge ourselves, what can we do differently? Where are we missing the mark? What are we not seeing? What are we not hearing in the community that we should be hearing? And just really, as a board and administration, make sure that we are highly connected with the parents of this community to, to make sure that that's what we're actually representing and not just our own ideas and ideologies.
Thank you, Mr. Mica Heisler. Jamie Johnson, you're next, please, closing remarks.
Thanks, John. And I want to thank the middle school parent group for sponsoring this forum, and John, I want to thank you for hosting, doing a great job, as always. I want to thank my fellow board members, administration, teachers, and all the Hudson district employees for making service on this board as so enjoyable. I want to thank my wife and my family for their understanding and support for these last nine years. This is a school district that we can really be proud of, and that's why I want to thank the families too, for their involvement and their trust in bringing their kids to us. You know, in a recent survey, we had over 90% approval rating among our parents. And you got to be doing something right when you get that many people agreeing and showing approval. One of the seminars I went to for the school board down in state convention was that in any system, you're going to have about 16 to 20% of the people that are just going to be anti-anything. And so when you can get over that hump of 80% being in favor of something, I think we're doing something right. But when I see the effort of our teachers and students and families, it makes me excited to want to contribute to their success. And the success of our school district just has a direct relationship to the quality of life for all the citizens here in Hudson. You know, I'm, I, you can tell, I have a passion for public education. And if serving on school board is my payback for all the public education has done for me personally and my family, then I probably need to run for eight terms. But I'm not going to focus on that, I'm just focused on running for this fourth term. I grew up in a working-class family with very few of my extended family even going to college, let alone getting advanced degrees. I was raised on a farm, and I know what hard work and effort is all about. With that work ethic and strong foundation of a public education, I was able to go to college and then law school. And I saw my kids benefit from the quality education that this school district provides. We just have an amazing legacy of great teachers, and I want to continue that. And that's our mission, is to recruit, retain, and support quality employees, because it's those certified teachers that are the backbone to our district and to all of our success. Hudson's filled also with families like ours that want and deserve the same opportunities that an excellent education can provide the students. And in addition to the work ethic, another byproduct of that farming background was frugality and understanding the value of a dollar. And those, I've been accused of being cheap in, in many areas. So I try to see very hard, when we look at our school district budget, that it reflects those values of hard work and understanding the value of a dollar. And we want to carefully allocate our resources where we can get the most bang for a buck. One of the examples is our referendum, when we had approved 90 point, the voters had approved the school district getting $90.1 million in bonds. And when the middle school portion of the project came in under budget by a half million, I made the motion and I led the charge for us to not just sell those bonds and go that, into that debt, debt, just to be able to have the money sitting in a bank somewhere. I want, that's the taxpayers' money, I said, and they deserve a break. If we came in under budget, it should be reflected. And so as a result, we only bought, you know, we bought under 80, 90 million in bonds. Since coming onto the board, I've sought out training and development to become a better board member. I've attended all but one of the state conventions in the nine years I've been on the board, and I've been to the national convention and several regional trainings. And I'm committed to making Hudson School District a top 10 district in the entire state. We're getting closer, we've made great progress in the last decade, but I'm with the staff and the administration we have, along with the families and the support of our community. I am commit, confident that we can get there. There are a lot of hard decisions that we have to make. And tonight, you know, you heard some agreement on some of the issues, and you heard, you know, some issues being brought up. I think it is true that, you know, our property tax levy has doubled in a little over the last decade. But part of that, that's only part of the story. Part of, the other part of the story is that we've lost millions of dollars in state aid because of the way the public schools are funded. We don't have any control over that on the school board. That's a decision down in Madison. And, you know, when Dean Knutson was our assembly person, he tried to get legislation that would change the funding and reward districts that were being frugal, like Hudson. And in the draft legislation, Hudson was in a category all by itself. It was going to be able to really benefit from such a system. Unfortunately, you couldn't get the majority of the districts to go along with it. But just as examples, it was before we did the high school, $27 million we were getting in state aid. But now, because of the way it's funded and the way they look at the value of the district and our declining enrollment, it's all forced us to shift that burden onto the taxpayers. We need to come up with other ways of funding schools, but again, we're limited in what we can do. But we've got decisions, hard decisions to make in, in these next five years or so with the facilities and how we're going to spend that, and whether we're going to invest in keeping six schools operating, and how, what impact that might have on other staffing and so forth. It'll be great to have six buildings, but with a lot of empty classrooms, you know, and then the rooms that do have kids, do we start putting 30 kids in a class, 35 kids? And that just puts a strain on our teachers and a strain on the learning all the way around. So we think we need to balance how we spend our dollars, and I want to be a part of that decision. And I think that we still have great things to achieve, and I just ask for your vote on April 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Jamie's being humble, too. I think one of your inventions, the new Glarus Spotted Cow beer, was outstanding. So it's, thank you.
That was long after my time there.
Rob Brown, you'll be the last with your closing comments.
Thanks, John. Do, do I still get five minutes?
Yes, yes.
So just to, I want to share some appreciation for everybody in the audience, those folks at home, our middle school parent group, again, absolutely fantastic job. It sounds like it was a little easier this time than last time, but thank you for, for all the wonderful effort. In a, in a moment of seriousness, I'd like to recognize Mr. Ryan Wheeler. He was brave enough to get on this stage and share with everyone that he wanted to focus on his family. You could have easily sent a letter to the district office, and for that, you are a stand-up person. I just met you last night. You are a stand-up person, so thank you for your bravery. So as I mentioned in my opening comments, I've been a part of the community, my wife and I, for 20 years. Back in 2015, early 2015, actually would have been late 2014. Back in 2015, early 2015, actually would have been late 2014, I remember just grumbling about the two prior secondary space referenda. I was sitting in my easy chair and I was just, I was having a bad moment and my wife, Tara, looked at me and she said, either do something about it or shut up. Well, I ran for school board, so thank you, my love. In, in 2015, the, the main reason I ran was the struggle that we had. We became a divided community during those two referenda. It was, it was hard to go into the community and talk to people about things other than what the school district was doing. I was fortunate enough to be elected to the school board. 2016, through a lot of community engagement, led frankly, in, in big part by Jamie Johnson, so thank you for that service. We were fortunate enough to, to build enough of a, of an opportunity where the referendum was in fact community-centric. We talked about tax tolerance, we talked about what the secondary space needed to be and how it needed to be different than the prior attempts. In 16, we were successful. The, the recent facility plan, although it's, it's necessary, our elementary schools, other than Rivercrest, have, have specific needs and I would not call them deferred maintenance, I would call them aging systems and there is a difference. Aging systems, especially when we look at Rock as a, for instance, their boilers, as I understand it, are steam and are original to that building. You can only do so much for so long. The middle school roof leaks, you can only patch a roof that is beyond its useful life for so long. We have invested during my time on the school board, we added to our deferred, well, our maintenance, our maintenance budget, trying to keep up. But when you have the square footage that you have in this district, at some point, as you do at home, or if you're a business owner, or if you're a farmer, at some point, because you own it, you need to invest in it. And that's the point where we're at. So the, the challenge that we have with the recent facility work is that it wasn't, and we can argue, but it was, we had a facility task force, it was, there wasn't enough community engagement. Our teachers and staff were not engaged. And I, and I cringe at the potential of dividing our community again. We cannot afford to go to referendum and not have it be a community-based effort. We simply can't. Talking a little bit about our financial situation, we've been fortunate enough, back in 2015, I mentioned, we had basically an opportunity for the school board to not tax our constituents at a rate of about $13 million. Could you imagine had the board at that time said, yeah, let's, let's levy to the limit? Could you imagine the, the brimstone and fire that would have come from the community? And so we were being frugal from a tax standpoint. You know, furthermore, today, as Jamie mentioned, you know, the state continues to erode the revenue that comes to our school district for a variety of reasons. And today, our under levy or that give-back from a tax standpoint is less than $1 million. Our facilities have needs, there are challenges that this district faces that will take a lot of discussion, a lot of community engagement. And frankly, a community-centric solution, conversation, engagement is something I've done for more than 25 years. I've worked with school districts for more than 25 years. I've been on our school board for two terms. And frankly, I look forward to the opportunity, if I can earn that chance by this community, to come back and leverage my experience, not only on our school board, but what I do personally. I think I can make a difference, frankly, I know I can make a difference. I ask for your vote on April 5th.
Thank you, Rob. All right, I'd like to thank again the Hudson Middle School Parent Group for putting this event on tonight. We'd like to thank the Hudson High School and Ryan Delacroix for the work that they've done and the facility that they've provided. Nate Scug and the River Channel folks, thanks very much. And last but not least, the Hudson Police Department, thank you for being here tonight as well. Most importantly, let's thank Mr. Rob Brown, Mr. Micah Heisler and Jamie Johnson for running for school board. And I'm John Knutson again, just saying goodnight, have a great evening. I think the school board candidates may stay if individuals have questions, but other than that, have a great night.